I'd like to call to order the November 1st, 2016, of the regular meeting of the Bowling Green Board of Commissioners and invite you to stand if you wish while I lead an invocation. Lord, as we begin this meeting, we ask your blessings on the family of Gary Miller, who lost his battle with cancer this past couple of weeks in the fire department. We pray for his family, Tammy and their children, Hannah, Landon, and Mason, as they experience that loss, but we know they rejoice with him as he's in your arms. Lord, thank you for the people here in this room tonight and the people in this community. We pray for guidance and protection for us and those who are serving as our first responders. Lord, thank you for all that you do for us. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Join me in the pledge of allegiance?
Lord?
Here it is. Oh, here they move it. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Call the roll.
Commissioner Perigin?
Here.
Commissioner Williams?
Here.
Commissioner Denning?
Here.
Commissioner Hill?
Here.
Mayor Wilkerson?
Here. We have awards and recognitions now, so I want to invite, first of all, Ms. Alexiev to come up with Operation Pride. I believe she has a...
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, I'm Angie Alexiev. I'm with Operation Pride here in Bowling Green, Warren County, and one of the things that we are very excited about doing as part of our mission to promote activities which enhance and maintain our community's appearance is to recognize those individuals and businesses, and sometimes neighborhoods, that make improvements to the exterior of their properties because those things enhance, excuse me, our entire community. We want to recognize them for those enhancements. So we're very excited about that. We have our October Residential Pride Award recipient here, Mark and Kristi Fuqua or Fuquay?
Either.
Okay, good. We were debating about that in the office today. If you all would come forward, that'd be great. They live at 822 Covington Street here in Bowling Green. They have done a phenomenal job with the renovation of that home, and we could not be happier about having that nomination and to present them with the October Residential Pride Award from Operation Pride, Mark and Kristi Fuqua-Fuquay.
Mark, tell us, I know you've had that house... For quite a while. How long did it take you to redo the whole thing?
We started in May of last year, and then we finished in May of this year, so we spent about, I'm sorry, we spent about a year on it. So, we had a lot of fun, and I tell my friends and people on Facebook that we followed our sons to Bowling Green. My business has been here for more, I've worked here for more than forty years, but we brought our sons and grandchildren came to Bowling Green to live, so we decided we needed to follow them so we could have a little something to do to keep us busy as we lived longer. We really enjoyed it, and it's a lot of fun, and we appreciate y'all taking the time to recognize us.
Very nice. It's truly remarkable what you did to it. Congratulations. Kenan, it's your turn. Come on up and introduce yourself, your organization, and what you have in your hand there.
Thank you so much, Mayor, for the glorious opportunity to be in front of each and every single one of you. My name is Kenan Mokonovich. I am eighteen years old, of Bowling Green, Kentucky. I founded Young Visionaries Foundation, which this year has taken off globally, consisting of a network of over thirteen thousand people. We have done a wide variety of events here in Bowling Green, Kentucky. Most recognize, what people mostly acknowledge me for is that most nonprofits usually do two or three events in one year. We managed to pull that off and do nine, so, in our very first year of operating. So, many people question how I do it, but, you know, I'm just committed and dedicated. Took many sleepless nights just to make it possible. We gave over thousands of meals to the homeless population here in Bowling Green, not only here in Bowling Green, but this year we've done Toledo, Ohio, Nashville, Bowling Green, and Atlanta, and we had a lady reach out to us from Bangalore, India, wanting to continue the project down there. So, as you can see, it just caught a lot of attention across the country and globally of what we do, and people are just inspired and continue to strive, strive to make differences in their communities. October 22nd of 2016, I was on a sponsored trip on behalf of the Capitol, Washington DC, and the city of Orlando, Florida, to receive the 2016 National Caring Award in Mother Teresa's name. This award is, you know, pretty prestigious, has over ten thousand people getting nominated every single year, but only five people are selected. Many recipients of the award include Pope Francis, Muhammad Ali, former President Bill Clinton, and Maya Angelou, Dr. Ben Carson, many more names. I'm just here just to tell you all, I'm very blessed to be in this city and very thankful for Commissioner Sue Perigin, Commissioner Rick Williams, Mayor Bruce Wilkerson, Commissioner Melinda Hill, Commissioner Jonah Denning, for everything you all do for the city, because I'm inspired. You know, every time, you know, I remember what you told me, Mayor Bruce Wilkerson, when I received the Jefferson Award earlier this year, to just keep striving and keep making a difference in our community. And, you know, I'm just blessed to receive this award. And when I went down there, you know, I just, when I was on my flight down there, I just reflected back on my journey, you know, and everything I went through as a kid growing up. You know, I grew up in poverty for most of my childhood. I was a child of Bosnian immigrants, and, you know, I want to thank you all for accepting my, the Bosnian people with open arms, to give them opportunities to be somebody in this community and give their children a chance to get an education and become successful, be somebody, you know, in the world where we live in. And on my flight there, I was just thinking back, you know, I used to sit in the back of the bus, but now I sit at the very front of the plane. So, just all that just went through my mind, and when I received the award, something interesting is that, you know, I was sitting, talking with Coach Dale Brown. He also received the award with me, and we were talking, and I had a lot of, Senator Rob Dole came up to me and asked me, along with Mr. Hallam and Darris, too, and a lot of others, came up to me and asked me, "Where is Bowling Green, Kentucky located?" And I was just shocked. They said, "Is it around Louisville? Is it around Lexington?" I said, you know what I did? I pulled out a map and I showed them. I told them, "Remember this city, because I can guarantee you that you will see a lot of young talent coming from here. Remember the city, and remember my name." And I can honestly tell you all that, they have, on that day, there's a plaque that they have inducted me into the Hall of Fame in the Museum of Washington DC, and I put the city of Bowling Green right underneath my name. So I'm glad and blessed just to be here. Thank you. Now, let this serve as inspiration to our youth here in our city, that you can put your city on your back, and you can take it all the way to the Capitol, Washington DC. Thank you.
Thank you, Kenan. Appreciate that. All of us have a special knowledge of the work that you've done here, so thank you so much for all that you've done for Bowling Green, and that'll be the first of many, I'm sure, that comes your way. Thank you so much. Ms. Ward, do you have any other awards or recognitions?
No awards or recognition, sir.
Anyone else? But that's going to go on all night, you know that, so. All right, do we have city manager comments?
I do, and I would like to extend, on behalf of Mr. DeFebo, his regrets for not being able to be here today. He's under some circumstances that are beyond his control at the moment. So, I believe this is the first regular commission meeting in the ten-plus years that he's been here that he's been not able to attend, and I know that's something he's very proud of, so I know that he is definitely not happy about not being here today, so.
Always watching, so.
Yes, he is, he is, he's watching, he's watching. But, as the acting city manager, I would like to request a closed session discussion at the end of the regular agenda. There is no action expected to follow, and Ms. Jackson will read the reason.
Pursuant to KRS 618101C for discussion of pending litigation against the city.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Denning. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Perigin?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Else? Approval of minutes for the regular meeting on October 18th, 2016?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Perigin. Any additions, deletions, or corrections? Please call the roll.
Perigin?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
About an opportunity during our regular meetings for public comments, is any, on an item that may not be on tonight's agenda, if there's anyone that'd like to step forward now, please state your name and address for the record, please, sir.
Hello, my name is Dr. Grayson Hunt, he/him/his. I live at 803 East 10th Avenue here in Bowling Green. I want to be positive about this, but I'm tired of being told that I don't deserve equal protection under the law as a member of the LGBTQ community. Why should I, as a minority, be asked to trust strangers not to deny me rights, recognition, and services in a town that makes discrimination legal? Why not just pass the fairness ordinance and be done with it? So you'll say, "Show me the evidence of discrimination." I have two things to say to this. The first thing is that there's no law protecting us from discrimination. When it is legal to discriminate, statistics don't exist because the Human Rights Commission cannot collect the data. The fact that equal protections don't exist demonstrates the city allows discrimination. The second thing is that the burden of proof is now on your shoulders. It is common knowledge that we live in a world where gay, lesbian, bisexual, trans, and queer people are stigmatized and exposed to discrimination and violence. But not only that, it's worse, because anyone perceived to be LGBTQ is at risk, too. We know that children and adults who are perceived by others to be a member of the LGBTQ community are bullied and harassed at work and at school. This is why other states in the US have mandates to protect people on the basis of actual or perceived sexual orientation and gender identity. Do we really, honestly, think that Bowling Green is so good at LGBTQ issues that we don't need this ordinance? I can't say that that's the case. I think it's willfully ignorant to believe that. So you'll say, "But I have gay friends." Look, I understand many of you have gay, lesbian, and bisexual friends. Of course you do. We exist everywhere, right? And you're lucky to have us. And if your friends have remained silent about your refusal to support LGBTQ rights, they're being polite, okay? But don't misunderstand their silence as approval. If your friends are silent, there's a good chance it's because they're afraid of being disappointed by you. You owe it to your friends and their children to take a stand on this issue. Finally, perhaps you'll say, "We already do treat people fairly." Fine. If there really is no systemic or interpersonal discrimination here in Bowling Green against the LGBTQ community, then it's time to honor that reality. Honor it with a law that reflects and protects that truth. It is of no cost to you or your constituents to do so, and yet I have everything to gain from knowing that I'm protected against discrimination by my bank, by my employer, by my neighbors. So Election Day is coming. I hope you'll change your hearts or your minds in favor of fairness. Thank you very much.
One else? All right. Yes, sir?
Your Honor, may I ask a couple of questions? Just a couple of brief questions. Have you been discriminated against at your workplace, and where is your workplace?
My workplace is WKU. I'm a professor there, and last week, last week, we passed, for the first time, an ordinance to include sexual orientation and gender identity as part of the nondiscrimination bill. So up until last week, if I had been discriminated against by my employer, if I had been dismissed when they found out who I am, there would be no recourse for me. So as of last week, my employer is now legally obligated to protect my rights. But as for the person I rent my home from, my nice home that I take good care from, of, I don't know what she is going to do. I have no idea. So I, again, have to trust people that I have no reason to trust, that they will not evict me, because I can be evicted, right? If somebody finds out about me, knows that I'm trans, I could be out of there.
Even if you pay your rent on time, you're not damaging the property?
I know. It's bizarre that I'm a good rent-paying, tax-paying citizen here, a member of Bowling Green, and yes, I could be discriminated against, and there would be no legal recourse for me, because we have not yet added these four important words, sexual orientation and gender identity, to the nondiscrimination bill.
So the local courts, or whatever court would be available to you based on where you live, had, if you lived anywhere else than Bowling Green, Warren County, are not available to you through the county attorney's office or Commonwealth Attorney's Office? In other words, if something happens to you physically, you are saying there's no recourse that you, as an individual of this country, can take?
Thank you for allowing me to come to the podium, Dr. Hunt. That is exactly what he is saying, and that is exactly what we are saying. It is perfectly legal in Bowling Green, Kentucky, to discriminate against anyone either on their sexual orientation or gender identity or perceptions thereof, and Commissioner Denning, there is no legal remedy. The existing civil rights law, which mirrors that of Title VII of the Civil Rights Act of 1964, does not include sexual orientation or gender identity. So anyone who has the courage to do what Dr. Hunt has done today makes themselves vulnerable, and the community asks you to do the right thing and protect people who should not have to be courageous just to live in this community every day.
If I'm walking down the street and the distinguished doctor is walking towards me, vice versa, and so on, and I just reach over and hit the doctor and knock the doctor out on the sidewalk, there's no recourse for that?
Well, of course, you can't assault someone in the street, but, you know, if I'm targeted because I'm a member of the LGBTQ community, if I am let go or evicted because my landlady finds out that I'm trans, I have no recourse, because it's not a hate crime, and we don't have any law against discriminating against people on the basis of their sexual orientation and gender identity. Whereas, if a person of color was evicted and it was found out that it was on the basis of race, we would, there would be recourse. You cannot do that.
Yeah, but...
You can't fire a woman because they are pregnant, right? We can't do those things anymore. So we're asking to be added to the list of protections.
Of course, in all fairness, those people of color had to do a whole lot of things prior to this today, and a whole lot of things happened to us to get us to that point where we were included.
And I have to say that LGBT people of color have been fighting for gay rights since the beginning, so these are not separate issues. When more people have rights, there's more equality and justice everywhere.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
For consideration, second reading of ordinance BG 201632?
Ordinance Rezoning Real Estate. Ordinance Rezoning Attractive Land Containing 6.887 Acres From AG Agriculture AB Highway Business And RM3 Multi-Family Residential To RM3 Multi-Family Residential Located At 250 Cherry Farm Lane Presently Owned By Cherry Park LLC With Tybus Landing LLC As The Contract Vindy.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Perigin. It's a second reading. Does anyone have any further comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Perigin?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Second reading of ordinance BG 201633?
Ordinance Annuating Property By Consent. Ordinance Annuating A Total Of Approximately 6.87 Acres Located At 6132 And 6140 Scottsville Road With Property Presently Owned By Next Phase LLC And Said Territory Being Contiguous To Existing City Limits And Approving The Addition Of This Location To The Target Annexation Area Map And Further Approving Associated Economic Development Annexation Incentive Agreement.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams. Again, a second reading for bringing someone into the city limits by request. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Perigin?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal Order 2016-231?
Municipal Order Approving The Promotions Of Robbie L. Gilliam To The Position Of Assistant Fire Chief, Jason C. Brooks And Shannon L. Pardue To The Position Of Company Commander EMT And Michael R. Cornwell And C. Shane O'Bannon To The Position Of Fire Apparatus Operator EMT In The Fire Department.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Perigin. Ms. Ward?
As is the standard practice, I would like to invite Chief Coulson to come forward to present his recommendations for promotion.
Good evening. Mayor and Commissioners, retirements and promotions over the previous year have left several members serving in interim positions. The department's annual promotional testing has been completed, and it's my pleasure to be in front of you this evening to recommend five individuals for promotion within the fire department. I'd like to begin with two promotions in the prevention division. The two members being promoted or being recommended for promotion this evening have successfully completed the department's promotional exams, and both are currently serving in their respective positions on an interim basis. During the interim period, both have performed extremely well, and have held themselves to the highest of professional standards and ethics. First, for the position of company commander, which is our senior investigator, I'm here to recommend Jason Brooks for promotion. If I can get Jason to stand? Jason was hired in October of 2008, so he's been with, been serving the department for eight years now. He was promoted to fire apparatus operator in 2013, and he's been serving as interim company commander, senior fire investigator since August of 2015. Prior to joining us, Jason served in the Navy for seven and a half years, where he completed law enforcement, the law enforcement academy, and he's also attended Western Kentucky University. During his tenure with us, he's completed courses and earned certifications and credentials as a firefighter-one, certified firefighter-two, hazmat technician. He is also a certified fire investigator, both levels one and two. He's also a certified fire inspector, again, both levels one and two, and Jason is also a certified emergency medical technician. Joining Jason this evening are his wife Angela and four of his six children, Sophia, Kayden, Camden, and Aubrey. Again, Mayor and Commissioners, it's my pleasure to recommend Jason Brooks for promotion to company commander of the Bowling Green Fire Department. For the position of fire apparatus operator investigator, I'm here to recommend Michael Cornwell for promotion. Michael was hired in October of 2010, and he's served the department for six years now. He's been interim fire apparatus operator investigator since September of 2015. Michael attended Eastern Kentucky University and completed the Kentucky Department of Criminal Justice Law Enforcement Academy prior to his joining the department. Michael, during his tenure here, has completed courses and earned certifications and credentials, including firefighter-one and firefighter-two. He's also a hazmat technician. He's a certified driver operator, also a certified fire investigator, both levels one and two, and also a certified fire inspector, both levels one and two, and he also is a emergency medical technician. Joining Michael this evening are his wife Shauna and one of his two children, Dylan. Again, Mayor and Commissioner, it's my pleasure to recommend Michael Cornwell for promotion to fire apparatus operator investigator of the department. The next two promotions are within our training division. For the position of assistant chief of training, it is my privilege to recommend Rob Gillum for promotion. Rob was hired in October of 2003, so he's been with the department over thirteen years now. He was promoted to fire apparatus operator in 2009, company commander in 2014, and he's been serving as the interim assistant chief of training since March of this year. Prior to joining us, Rob served seventeen and a half years in the Army, in Army Reserve, and three and a half years in the Air Force National Guard. Additionally, he's attended Western Kentucky University. But Rob has completed numerous courses and earned various credentials during his tenure here. He also is a firefighter-one and certified firefighter-two. He's a hazmat technician and hazmat incident commander. He's also one of our aircraft rescue firefighters. He's credentialed as a driver operator. He has completed fire officer-one training. He's also a state fire instructor. He's completed both levels of fire, state fire inspector, both levels one and two. He's been active in technical rescue in areas of rope rescue and confined space. He is one of our department's incident safety officers, as well as one of the department's certified live-fire instructors. Additionally, Rob is certified as an emergency medical technician. Joining Rob this evening are his mother Janice Musclewhite, his wife Jennifer, and his two children, Ethan and Jordan. Again, Mayor and Commissioner, it is my pleasure to recommend Rob Gillum for promotion to assistant chief of the Bowling Green Fire Department. (applause) I'll be done in a minute. For the position of company commander in our training division, I'm here to recommend Shannon Purdue for promotion. Shannon also was hired in October 2003, again, with thirteen years of service within the department. He promoted to fire apparatus operator in 2013. Prior to joining the department, Shannon earned a bachelor's degree from Lipscomb University in Psychology, and also a bachelor's degree from Western Kentucky University in Middle School Education. During his tenure here, Shannon also has completed firefighter-one and two, hazmat technician. He also is a state fire inspector from both levels, a certified emergency medical technician, and is a certified driver operator and aerial operator. Shannon has played an instrumental role in the department's accreditation process, as well as the implementation of the department's juvenile fire center program. Joining Shannon this evening, I think they made it, are his wife Susan and their three daughters, Madison, Alex, and Ellen. Again, Mayor and Commissioner, Shannon Purdue. Lastly, with the promotion of Shannon, a fire apparatus operator position is created in our suppression division. For this position, seventeen members met eligibility requirements and completed the promotional testing process, which included a written exam in various scenarios to measure the candidate's ability to operate a fire apparatus. Based on the results of the promotional testing and his performance throughout his four-year career here, I'm here to recommend Shane O'Bannon for promotion to fire apparatus operator. Sorry, give me one second. Let me tell you all about him real quick. Shane was hired in 2000, September of 2012, so he's just a little over four years with the department. Prior to coming here, he earned a bachelor's degree from Western Kentucky University in interdisciplinary studies, and during his tenure here, he's been very busy. He's completed firefighter-one and two. He's also a hazmat technician. He is a certified driver operator. He's completed fire inspector-one. He's stationed at the airport, or he was, prior to promotion, but he was one of our aircraft rescue firefighters. He's certified as a rope rescue technician and also an emergency medical technician. But joining Shane this evening is his wife Heather. Again, Mayor and Commissioner, it's my pleasure to recommend Shane O'Bannon for promotion to fire apparatus operator.
Now, with the round.
(applause)
Thank you. We know all about him. What do y'all think?
Yeah, we've got one back there. It's a grandson of one of our policemen many years ago that I had the pleasure of working with in 1968. His granddad, Wilmer Brooks.
Know him, but didn't have to work, didn't get to work with him. That's a little long, little long before I got there, so.
Thanks, Bruce, for bringing that to my attention. It was a long time.
Well, you were gone before I got there, too, so. Thank you. We're tickled to death. Y'all have been so active and involved in the department and going to make it even better and greater. Thank you so much. I need a roll call, please.
Perigin?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes, thank you very much. I know y'all want to slip out and do your pictures and stuff. Thank you.
Was his dad Phil, was his dad a deputy? Was his dad a deputy? Okay.
Yeah, I worked with his dad then, okay.
He lived out there way up in, on Cepita, right across from the park, covering the woods. The people that built, renovated the house, and you turned off the lane, and you turned right, which one?
Turned right. It's the big one.
Up right next to Buddy Cane's?
It's almost down, about the third or fourth one from Euclid on the left, going from Lehman all the way down. As you start to go up the hill, it's, I think it's maroon. I think somebody told me it's a darker color. They just built a house around the house. All right. Now, the crowd's cleared out, so we'll continue with Municipal Order 2016-232.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number 2017-22 for Cave Mill Road and Crossings Boulevard Signal Construction Project from TEM Group Incorporated of Louisville, Kentucky, in the amount of $69,064.25.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Hill, and second by Perrigen. Ms. Ward.
This signal project actually dates back to 2008, when it was funded in that year's budget. Unfortunately, though, with the economic downturn, we had to hold the project. We also weren't quite sure on the location for the signal at that point in time. However, after determining the best location for the signal, we were able to refund it in this year's budget, and therefore, we went out for bid. We had three bids, and the lowest price bid is recommended for your approval. We have contacted, through the assistance of the Neighborhood and Community Services staff, we've sent out letters to about 400 households in the city portion of that area to announce the new signal. And so far, to my knowledge, we've only received positive feedback, so that's in our favor. We will have electronic message boards up to notify drivers of the pending change to the traffic control, and we will also use social media and other resources to also alert the public about the new traffic signal that will be going in. Public Works Director Greg Meredith is here if you have any other questions. We expect the project to take about 60 days once the notice to proceed is given.
I got a question. I know we can't speak on behalf of the county, but does the county actually send notices to those folks that live in that area that are actually county residents? Is there some notification besides Facebook for them?
I must say that I don't think there is, other than back in 2007 and '08. And plus, I guess the experience that I've seen recently, and I think a lot of people that travel that area is, Cave Mill Road is really, really busy. And so, you know, we looked at, I think, back in 2007 and '08, three different locations. This location happened to be kind of central. There was North Mill, there was the crossings, and there was Grotter Pond. So this intersection is kind of in between, and what it'll do is provide gaps, we think, for folks to get in and out of those roads as well. So we did not actually go to the county residents and say, "We're gonna do this right now."
Should work a little better there than the Grotter Pond, since we've got the intersection straightened out a little further down with Small House, so we don't have people trying to go around it, so.
Exactly. So that's our hope.
Any comments or questions? Please call or roll.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal Order 2016-233.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number 2017-25 for survey and design for stormwater mitigation projects from DDS Engineering PLLC of Bowling Green, Kentucky, in the amount of $28,800.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second. By Williams. Ms. Ward.
The stormwater mitigation program was established in 2011, and it was to address flooding that impacts public infrastructure or private properties. The construction projects are prioritized based on set criteria, and at the beginning of the program, we had over 60 large-scale projects. Projects are then reprioritized at the beginning of each new fiscal year, and for this year, a request for proposals was issued for design services related to four of those locations on the prioritized project lists. Those locations include 229 West 14th Avenue, 607 Woodford Street, 2110 Robin Avenue, and at the intersection of 13th Avenue and Nutwood Street. Seven proposals were received, and the best evaluated proposal is recommended for your approval, and it's from DDS Engineering. Greg Meredith is here if you have any questions.
Questions? Please call or roll.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal Order 2016-234.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number 2017-27 for police vehicle equipment from On Duty Depot Incorporated of Owensboro, Kentucky, law enforcement supply of Marietta, Georgia, and Truckers Lighthouse of Nashville, Tennessee, in the amount of $64,243.80.
So move.
Second. A Hill, second.
In September, the board approved the purchase of 12 new Dodge Chargers for the Police Department, and we now need to outfit those new vehicles. And the outfitting of the vehicles includes decals, gun racks, light bars, flashers, sirens, new consoles, et cetera. And we received three bids for that purpose. Staff recommends purchasing items from all three of the bidders in order to obtain the best prices available. Again, Greg Meredith is here to answer any questions about the bidding process, or Chief Hawkins, I believe, is here regarding the need for the proper upfitting of those vehicles.
Denning.
I have three questions. I know that several years ago, when I was not on the City Commission, this subject came up by prior City Commission of bringing vehicles in, ordering vehicles, and putting whatever we wanted to put on them, just as long as when the end result was a police car. This process here versus cars coming directly from the manufacturer with the equipment on it, what is the difference? Did we ever come to any type of paperwork posture on, here's what it costs if it comes from the manufacturer, here's what it costs if it comes plain, just a car, versus us putting equipment on it, buying equipment and so on? Did we ever get a picture of the two? Am I making sense?
You are making sense, and to my knowledge, there is no vehicle, equipment manufacturer, meaning Dodge or GM or Ford, that will also outfit those cars for us. They will paint them in a certain paint scheme that we asked them to do, in our case, black and white. But, and other than some of the motor equipment or the braking equipment that's beefed up for the police cars in those police packages, they will not do any outfitting of those cars because they're very specific to agencies. So for instance, the light bar that we want might be completely different than the light bar or the lighting equipment that another agency would want. And so, they don't offer that service, to my knowledge. We have to do that on the secondary market or do it ourselves.
And that changed when the Crown Vic went out?
I don't think Ford even did it at the Crown Vic level. I don't think we've ever received upfitting from the manufacturer at the factory. It's always been an aftermarket, secondary market purchase, and our Fleet Division has always installed that equipment for the Bowling Green Police Department. And they do a great job, by the way. I think Greg can speak to that in terms of his staffing, but they do a fantastic job of, and a very professional job of outfitting and upfitting those cars and installing that equipment.
But at one time, it was a lengthy, three or four-hour conversation right here about police cars coming fitted, and the questions were, why do policemen have to have this in the car, have that in the car, versus us putting equipment on?
Somebody would have to refresh my memory, because I don't remember that. The only conversations that I remember having about equipment that was pre-installed was either the type of radio, AM/FM, CD, that sort of thing that comes in the cars. And there was a, and excuse the pun, there was a heated discussion over heated mirrors.
Yeah.
On the outside of the car.
Yeah. That was a part of it. And the five individuals here, it was a three-hour conversation just on police cars. I know. I was looking at it. And know the individuals that were seated here. Know who was seated right over there, City Attorney. So when I talk about things, I know what I'm talking about. I remember it well. Heated windows, why does policemen have to have, the question from the seat up here. Why does policeman have to have heated windows on the outside? Well, everybody else has heated windows on the outside. Why shouldn't the policeman? Why they have to have regular radios in the cruiser? Well, you got a regular radio in your car. Remember it well.
I watched it.
Thank you, Mayor.
I watched it, too.
Yeah. Three hours.
All right. Any other discussion? Please call or roll.
Perrigen?
Thank you.
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal Order 2016-235.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number 2017-28 for the purchase of a minivan for the Neighborhood and Community Services Department from Pogue Chrysler Dodge Jeep Ram Fiat of Powderly, Kentucky, in the amount of $23,493.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Denning. Ms. Ward.
The Neighborhood and Community Services Department is replacing a 2001 Tahoe. As you know, this year was the year to actually catch up on some of our equipment and vehicle replacement schedule. And they currently have that vehicle being used by the Neighborhood Services Department. They have quite a bit of information that they have to haul around when they go to various events. They've got event materials, tents, signs, different things they have to haul around. So they had a request to get a larger-style vehicle, one that could accommodate the hauling of those larger event-type materials and other items, with the fold-and-go seating basically providing a full cargo area to be able to be used, and then also have the seating capacity that they may need to take people around to other events. If they were going to R&amp;D C Conference in another city, they could take some residents with them and travel. As we went through this process, the Dodge Grand Caravan is the particular vehicle that we received bids for. We did go out and request for bids. We had received, one company received, sent in two bids, one with a dual-zone air conditioning unit and one with a single-zone, same vehicle, just two different options. Staff recommends the purchase of the vehicle with the dual-zone air conditioning, obviously since it is available. Greg Meredith and Brent Childers are here to answer any questions you may have about the type of vehicle and its proposed uses.
I'll answer questions. We're making fun of you, Brent. I'm sorry. That's just part of life up here. You know that.
If you're in the back of that van, you want a little air, don't you?
The pool van, the pool van that we use here at City Hall does not have rear air in it. It's kind of uncomfortable traveling in. I will note that. I'm always stuck in the back.
You can call shotgun, right?
Maybe you could borrow theirs.
But the public needs to know we're replacing a 15-year-old vehicle, so. Any other comments or questions? Please call or roll.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. First reading of ordinance BG 2016-34.
Ordinance rezoning real estate. Ordinance rezoning attractive land containing .3094 acre from GB General Business to CB Central Business located at 700 State Street, presently owned by Robert Ellis, doing business as Ellis Interiors, with New Millennium Real Estate LLC as contract vendee.
So move.
Second.
Hill, second. Denning. Ms. Ward.
As again per our protocol, Planning Commission Executive Director Ben Peterson is here to respond to any questions, if you have any.
Company that had a lot across the road already under constructions. Any comments or questions? Please call or roll.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. First reading of ordinance BG 2016-35.
Ordinance closing a public right-of-way. Ordinance approving the closing of an unimproved right-of-way named Loudon Drive located between 1783 and 1791 Ashley Circle.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams. Ms. Ward.
You may recall, the city's been working on a drainage improvement project at Canton Avenue near Ashley Circle, and the board recently approved an agreement with Greenview Hospital regarding additional property needed for that particular project. And in exchange, we had agreed to close an unimproved and never constructed right-of-way named Loudon Drive, and then reverting that property to Greenview Hospital as part of the compensation for the property that the city needed for the project. The Public Works Department initiated the street closure process, which also required consideration by the Planning Commission. Once this closure is approved, the unimproved right-of-way property will be deeded to Greenview Hospital as originally provided in the agreement. Gene Harmon and Greg Meredith can respond to any questions or provide further explanation if needed.
Comments or questions? I'll have to abstain. I'm on the board at Greenview, so please call or roll.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Municipal Order 2016-236.
Municipal order waiving provisions of Chapter 6 Building Regulations, Subchapter 6-8 Building Permit Fees of the City of Bowling Green Code of Ordinances and other applicable city fee provisions related to the waiver of permit fees for the construction of the Salvation Army parking lot.
So move.
I'm sorry. Williams?
Motion by Hill, second by Williams. I ask for this municipal order to complement the recent grant award from the Women's Fund. I believe Ms. Perrigen and Ms. Hill were there to congratulate them on their grant that's going to allow them to expand their parking lot and expand their services to the homeless community. So we're happy to participate in this one-time waiver of fees for that particular project.
So we know the Women's Fund is managed by the Community Foundation, and it's an impact grant, and they were awarded $90,000 from a competitive grant with three other nonprofits that made it to the finals. Can we remember those? The two Salvation, the two?
Boys and Girls Clubs.
Boys and Girls Clubs, one in Simpson County and one in Warren.
And then Junior Achievement.
Junior Achievement. And that night, they each received $5,000. So there was a total of $110,000 given, or $105,000 given on behalf of women in this area as just a part of what we want to do to give back to our community. So I think Community Foundation has a lot to do. Jennifer Weddington and Shannon Vitale, and I can't name them all, but there's many, many, many that work very, very hard to get that money out to the community. So I just wanted to give that out to the public.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Call or roll.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Going into closed session, but would remind the public that our next scheduled meeting is Tuesday, November 15, 2016. Thank you for tuning in.